One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item C, adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to add hiring of an interim administrator to the agenda by placing it under Business I three.
We have a motion?
I make a motion to adjust the agenda by adding hiring of an interim administrator to I three and renumbering the remainder items as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Looks like I forgot to vote. I was reading. I'm sorry. I made the motion.
Communications and correspondence.
So I have four notes of resignation this morning, while three, and one is retirement. First, Sam Hughes, Ellsworth High School Wrestling; Dan Lindsay, EEMS Baseball Coach; sadly, Molly Shipman, EEMS Seventh Grade Reading; and Marilyn Starling will be retiring as Administrative Assistant in the Adult Education Program, and I'll pass those letters around for you to read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative reports. Assistant Superintendent Nikki Chan will go first.
All right, good evening. Welcome, everybody. We love having this many people here, don't we?
Yeah.
This is great. All right, happy February. I have quite a bit of detail in my report, which I won't, you know, read through everything this evening, but there is a couple of things that I really wanted to showcase this month or this past month. One is something that's been ongoing at EEMS, but the intervention team, which consists of several of our interventionists, so Kelly Rudolph, Moira Perry, Teeny Young, we also have our math interventionist, Janet Bertrand, with the leadership of Katie Danielson and Lee Elliott. We also are not only on the intervention side, but on the high end with our GT teacher, Jane Stackpole. They have begun to meet biweekly in order to really start to strengthen and define all tiers of MTSS for our school. So although, as you know, we've been really working on Tier One and trying to strengthen and identify all of our core practices for our regular classrooms, the following tiers, you know, what happens next when a student isn't succeeding behaviorally or academically with our regular programming? And there we have what's called Tier Two and Tier Three. So this team has been digging in very deeply and working on some really wonderful things. They're a strong leadership team across the school, and so I've identified some of the work that they're doing, which I really want to showcase as cutting edge and again showcasing how far the work that the school, under the leadership of administration, has also been working on. So some of the notes include data analysis. So as you know, we have implemented FastBridge, a new assessment system this year, but this team is working to not only ensure that we're able to understand the data, but they're also working to ensure teachers know how to read the reports and understand the data in order to say, okay, here's the information that I have, what's next for my students, what's next for all of them, and what's next for this small group or that small group. And so this team is really thinking about those key reports and really trying to break things down for all of our teachers so that we can really understand what's needed next for teaching and learning. They're also thinking holistically about our assessment calendar and thinking about ways, again, to support teachers and understanding when we do what assessments and why. Some of the feedback that we've gotten across several different surveys and strategic planning, et cetera, is thinking about communication and how we can do that better and understanding of what we do and when. And so this is a great example where this team is trying to create an assessment calendar that's very clear so that teachers know, okay, the second week in September, this is what we're doing. Then we follow up again in mid-year with these two screeners, and then at the end of the year, we do X, Y, Z. Or if you're an ML student, we, you know, implement the WIDA, and this is when we do that. So some really great structures that they're putting in place. In saying that, I forgot to mention Cheryl Peeny is part of this team, our ML teacher, so she's a really great contributor to that work, too. This team is thinking about curriculum alignment, so again, thinking about what we do do in the regular classroom and really advocating for next steps and for curriculum time with teams of teachers, because these interventionists and these specialists work all the time with our regular staff and also see the gaps that are created with some of our programming and/or, you know, what groups of students are needing. So they're actually taking a leadership role and advocating for, you know, first grade team would like time with you, Nikki, and this is what we think they need to be working on. So that's next level for a team of people to be able to take on that leadership and really see globally, kind of rise up over the dance floor and say, we're outside of the regular classroom a little bit, and here's what we're identifying as the needs for our school. We know that leaders usually do that, you know, principals and assistant principals, people, you know, curriculum people, but it's really empowering and exciting to see a team full of, you know, staff doing this. So I'd like to give them a little bit of a shout out. So good work to them. Mentioned budget. I'm sure Mrs. Bowles will mention budget, but we've spent a lot of time in her conference room with Amy Atherton and Carolyn Heller, just really going over every detail of the budget, trying to work line by line and making sure we're ready for that preparation coming up in a couple of weeks or so. Because I've mentioned it a couple of times at our meetings here, I do unfortunately have some bad news to share with you. I wanted to let you know that we were not selected for the main housing grant that I've talked about a couple of times. I think I basically said it here when I got the letter of regret I wanted to share with you. So there was five million dollars in funding that was applied for, and only two million dollars was given. I'll tell you the names, you know, Portland got seven hundred and fifty thousand out of two million, so they got like, you know, one-third of the money. Portland, Lewiston, Bedford, and then Bath, and I think Arustic County banded together to create some type of large packet. So what I could see by the communication is that unfortunately, you know, they're really trying to serve the maximum amount of people in these urban areas or, you know, all of Arustic County with a pot of money, and although we had a great application, and as you know, we have great need for these supports, it was a huge moment to understand that we did not get that. So we're going to continue to work and think about next steps. They did let us know that Healthy Acadia did get a Housing Navigator Specialist in a different grant, so, you know, we're thinking about ways how we can partner with the city with services that they have, partner with Healthy Acadia, which has, you know, a similar type position for Housing Navigator, and be able to support our students and families that need the most support. So I like to give you good news, but that's, I want to be transparent. And then the final piece of my report, again, I'm not going to give all the details, but I did tell you that I would kind of follow up on some details of the Twenty-First Century Learning Grant that we do plan on applying for in the coming months. There's a short letter of intent that needs to happen in a couple of weeks, and then the application is due in April. But in a nutshell, I just wanted to share that the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant, or CCLC, is really to do a couple of different things for a school district. One, it really makes sure that we have strong after-school programs and summer programs. Now, we do have that, as you know, at EEMS, but we do not have that at the high school, and so we've been talking to both facilities and just starting early conversations about what that could look like. The intent of the grant is not only to serve students with academic need, but also it's very important to enrich students. And so thinking about all of the athletes in the room, et cetera, a program run by Twenty-First Century would really be designed to create, for example, an after-school environment where athletes could stay after and have a snack and a place to be before practice, or some of the clubs that we already offer and do could be rolled into a more comprehensive program at, you know, EHS or EEMS, for example, all while providing supports to, whether it was the athletes or any student, you know, academic support, you know, literacy supports, math, homework help, things like that. And then the expectation would also be that there is a summer program to go along with that. And along the same vein, we've talked about how that could look at EEMS, which we, as you know, we had a successful program last year run by a Singleton Grant, but also thinking about how that could look at EHS, because as we move further and further away from, you know, the standards work that we had done, our summer school program really needs to kind of change to be back up to date with how we're running our courses, et cetera. Up to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year for multiple years, a three-year grant could be offered to our community with this opportunity. So again, just wanted to give you a couple of details on that, and we'll be continuing to give you more details on that as we come together as a team and really put together our finalized details for our plan. And then just in closing, I'd like to just say thank you to the board and Mrs. Bowles for extending their trust in me and some of her, you know, absences and letting me kind of make sure that I can take care of our teams and our staff and some of the challenging situations that we've been through lately. So I appreciate that trust and accountability.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowles?
Okay. So tonight for my report, the first two things I want to talk about are, one was attached in the board packet, fifty-seven pages. Didn't think you'd want me to photocopy that for you. But I think it's important for the public to hear about the final report that came out from the state regarding recommendations for policy and practice changes regarding public school construction and renovation. As many people may or may not know, the large number of facilities across the state that are in dire need of renovation or construction greatly outweighs the amount of funding statewide that's available for local school communities to fix their schools. And unfortunately, the way things work in Maine is that you wait for the construction list to come out once every four to eight or ten years, and you pray you're at the top of the list to get support for funding. It's inequitable, and it is kind of antiquated in terms of the large number of schools that now are in need versus the funding that's available. Like many other states, Maine relies on local property taxes to help fund and finance these loans and bonds for schools to fund public school capital improvement. We've never in the state of Maine identified any sort of specific state revenue streaming source to help fund these things, and unfortunately, the current model that we have in Maine really leads to lower equity in school funding and creates vastly inequitable situations across the state, because year to year, you are at the mercy of what the income levels are in your geographic area. Plus, you're constantly relying on communities having to take out loans or further bonds to fund these projects, because the state always doesn't fund the full cost of a construction project, which means that local communities are relying on taxes in their local communities to help fund the offset of the construction projects. So really, the MEPR report has done a lot of studying over the last couple of years based on a governor's recommendation to really look at what's the history of school construction in Maine? How are we going to get schools caught up and renovated? And of course, the city of Ellsworth is one of those communities that's in dire need of an upgrade at Hancock County Technical Center. We are one of those communities anxiously awaiting the construction list to come out this spring in vast hopes that we can have an updated school that maybe could also fold in some of our other community construction needs into one project. But really, this report, if you want to look at it, it is a really in-depth look at the current model, maybe some ideas for other state models, and then they did hold a superintendent's Zoom session. Nikki participated for Ellsworth when I was out, and really, superintendents identified three major areas that needed to be looked at. An entirely new statewide funding model was recommended, a more holistic approach for statewide planning needs. So for example, right now, when we put in our application, we could only talk about Hancock County Technical Center. We could not talk about our need for adequate space for adult education or expanding early learning for our community, whether it be pre-K or daycare. We couldn't talk about folding in University of Maine Augusta or Eastern Maine Community. Like, we have really big, long-term plans for the school department, and under the current application process, you cannot talk about any of that. It has to be specifically what are the needs in your one building. So that, to me, is really short-sighted and doesn't give communities the chance to really be planful, and that did come out statewide across superintendents. And then the need for continued statewide assistance. The state cannot continue to assume that cities or small towns can absorb the cost of full funding of schools. They can't assume that. So there has to be a call for additional state assistance for these. So that report has been released. It will be interesting to see what happens as a result of that, but I felt like it was important for the community to hear where the state is at with that topic. The next topic that I think it's really important, because in Ellsworth, this is certainly a very major issue and is certainly part of our conversations at the leadership level across our district, I did include for you a copy of the Right From the Start newsletter. The current budget proposal from the governor's office completely decimates early childhood initiatives and really, I think, is going to drastically harm the school department long-term in a variety of ways. I think the childcare educator stipends that have been put forth over the last couple of years. Our biggest workforce problem right now is educators, and finding people to work in daycares and early learning facilities and pre-K programs and even in our schools, that deficit is growing and growing and growing. And you can see in the stats, early learning daycare providers are in the bottom three percent of earnings. And so if you take away those stipends, you're going to lower their ceiling for pay even more, which is going to drastically harm. Her budget would cut three point six million dollars annually in Head Start, which is a huge problem for families that need and want their early learners to get an education, which of course affects their readiness for kindergarten in all of our schools and programs. And then finally, the Child Care Employment Award, they're talking about eliminating completely, which if you're a childcare worker and you're in the bottom three percent and you're paying for childcare for your own children, you're losing money on the deal. So these are some really big things, and to me, it's in opposition to the push for everyone to have access to early pre-K. And so the disconnect is there, because if you're cutting access for families to early childhood education, you are hurting your pre-K to eight schools long-term, and you're drastically impacting your community. So I would ask that you guys review this, the front and back. This is a really good handout, and I do believe that part of our job is advocacy at the legislative level, so reaching out to your local legislators about your concerns regarding this, I think, would make a big impact, both not just for our learners, but it affects everything. As we're trying to convince people to come into the world of education, this certainly is not going to assist with that, and our educators need to be able to afford and access daycare in order to remain teachers in our schools. So this is something that I'm pretty passionate about and think is really important. In highlight at this time of year, one of my favorite things is always nominations have been put forth for Hancock County Teachers of the Year. And so every year, I announce those who have been nominated, and this year, we have quite the list. So I would like to recognize that these teachers were nominated either by fellow staff members, students, or parents can nominate. And then these individuals then decide, do I want to put myself forward in the process because it is a lengthy process? And as you know, Ryan Lowell made it to the semifinals last year, you know, English teacher at Ellsworth High School. So the following nominees in no particular order: Sunshine Barrett, art teacher at EEMS; Janet Bertrand, math interventionist, EEMS; Alexis Chapman, first grade, EEMS; Susan Frost, pre-kindergarten teacher, EEMS; Rebecca Hat, fourth grade teacher, EEMS; Mary Lowell, third grade teacher, EEMS; Tara Mason, Hancock County Technical Center Business Leadership and Hospitality Instructor; David Norwood, physical education teacher, EEMS; Megan Merrill, special education, EEMS; Karen Shea, pre-kindergarten teacher, EEMS; Megan Stubbs, early childhood education instructor, Hancock County Technical Center; and Amanda Violet, reading interventionist, EEMS. I'd like to point out that this isn't a simple, like, type of name in and boom, you're nominated. There is quite a bit of work to nominating someone. The state vets it, and then it's decided whether or not it's accepted or not. So I'm really proud that this many people from our school department have been nominated and accepted for nominations for Hancock County Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to those teachers.
Yes.
Yay. Also, to provide a reminder, we have pushed out multiple times the Strategic Planning Survey. We've sent that out a couple times through, to staff. Students have had the opportunity to take this, and it's been on Facebook and our website, and we really want parents, citizens, business owners to fill this out. This is extremely important for the Strategic Planning Committee to finalize a draft mission, vision, and five-year plan for where we want our school department to go. So if you haven't filled that out yet, we really encourage you. If you need an updated link or you can't find it on Facebook or on the website, please feel free to call my office, the superintendent's office at Erelane, or call any of the school's main offices, and they can send that to you without a problem. But we would love for that to be filled out before the end of the week, if possible. Budget update, everyone's favorite topic. The FY 2026 budget process is underway. As Nikki mentioned, myself, Nikki, Carolyn, and Amy have been going line by line through every detailed requisition in the budget, trying to catch duplications, mistakes, things on wrong lines, questioning things that have been put in. We've also started our first round of meetings with the Finance Committee. Paul and Bev sat through three hours, a little over three hours, of budget presentations from department heads this past Monday, and they will do another round the Monday after vacation. The goal is to have our first rough draft of the budget to the board at the March meeting to kind of show you where we're at with everything, with the goal to be to meet the city's timeline, to have our budget approved at the April school board meeting, with then a city council approval at the April council meeting. This allows us time for everything to get printed for the ballots in June. I am meeting with City Manager Pierce on Friday to, again, reiterate and make sure that timelines are still the timelines and are not going to change, talk about the next time they would like me to present the school department budget and what they would like that to look like. I think it's important for the public to know that coupled with that, there is a lot of concern and chatter about possible federal funding happening, cuts happening through some of the initiatives that are coming through Washington. Ellsworth American contacted me about this yesterday, wanting to know how much federal funding we receive in some of our grants. And so the public knows, it is over a million dollars that we receive in federal funding that helps offset our budget. That federal funding ranges from special education to professional development training for staff, academic achievement for disadvantaged students, looking at academic education and well-rounded education, rural education money. And then Hancock County Technical Center receives a substantial amount of its funding through the federal government, and so career and technical education schools across the country are worrying about this possibility of cut. So I do think it's important that the public understand that a million dollars of our funding stream for our school department is not coming through the local budget, but it is done through federal funding. So if those numbers are to change or be slashed, that would drastically change some of the things that we are able to do or not able to do as a result. So that is my report for this month. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. Next, committee. On the agenda is committee reports.
We, the Policy Committee, met, had a few things that we just reviewed, but we're actually going to be going over them in a little bit, so we'll get some more detail on those.
Same is for...
Verb, that's what she said, for the curriculum.
Oh, yeah, curriculum, too.
Yep. All kinds of science.
Yep.
And Facilities has not met due to illness, but nothing that was pressing that we needed to continue working on that's not already being worked on.
Yeah. And as Amy said, Finance met yesterday, and we're going to meet again, and things are... Yeah.
Spend lots of quality time.
I feel like, compared with previous years, we're in a good place in the budget development. We're further along than we have been in many of the previous years, so that's a good thing. And I think the city is also trying to get further along than they have been, so it'll be a good process, I think.
And Personnel is continuing to move along with negotiations with the specialist unit. We met again last night, and we are getting close, I think...
For gaining.
To a new contract, yes.
For gaining.
We are gaining.
Agreed.
All right. Next is public participation. And before we start with this, I just want to make a few comments about our board policy on public participation. We... We're going to limit public comments to the total number of public comments, not to exceed thirty minutes. Comments by individuals are limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. The board will hear public comments from Ellsworth School Department, parents, teachers, and/or other Ellsworth citizens first. There's time remaining. We can ask other people to step up. Speakers will be recognized by the chair, and comments should be addressed to the chair, and the comments will be made from that podium over there and speak into the microphone. Speakers are expected to follow rules of comment etiquette and decorum, including refraining from using vulgar and/or obscene language, yelling, threatening others, using words or by other actions, making defamatory comments, or otherwise engaging in any activity that disrupts orderly meeting progress. We discourage duplication or repetition of comments, so if someone, you're getting up to speak and someone has already said some of the, covered some of the points you were going to make, please skip over those and... Discussion, this is important. Discussion of personnel matters is not permitted during public comment period due to the privacy, confidentiality, and due process rights of school unit employees. For purposes of this policy, discussion of a personnel matter means any discussion of job performance or conduct of a school unit employee, including complaints, but also including positive and complimentary comments about that person. Discussion of matters involving individual students are also not permitted during the public comment period due to the privacy, confidentiality, and due process rights of the school unit's students. Any concerns about personnel matters and/or student matters should be directed to the superintendent or another appropriate administrator outside of board meetings so that they can be addressed through an alternative channel and in a manner consistent with privacy, confidentiality, and due process rights of the individuals involved. And my role as board chair is to stop any public comment that is contrary to these rules. So with that having been said, we ask, if you haven't already signed in on the sign-in sheet... sheet there, and you'd like to make a public comment, please sign in first, and then we'll just see who would like to come to the podium first.
Hi, my name's Joel Horn. I'm here to...
Oh, could you also, when you come up, thank you for identifying yourself, also say which, which town you live in?
Ellsworth. What brings us here today is a fairly significant issue. It's been all over the news lately, boils down to sportsmanship. I'm here to advocate for our student athletes, particularly our wrestlers and our coach. I have worked with Sam Hughes for...
Remember, we can't mention any individuals.
I have worked with several of our coaches, and, and we are asking our student athletes and our administrators to have sportsmanship at the, on the very tip of their tongue. But what's being lost is, sportsmanship also comes down to parents, and the job of a parent of an athlete, I believe, is to bring my child to practice, get him to where he needs to be on time. And then, once he's there, you folks have hired the coach. It is then your responsibility to make sure that practice is being conducted safely. And when you've had a coach that has been in a position for 10-plus years, I think it's fairly obvious, with the success of our athletic programs, that for the most part, we do a pretty darn good job. But what can't be allowed to happen is our coaches continually be harassed by parents and have our children's athletic endeavors be interrupted by parents. You know, our kids are in high school. It's time to let them spread their wings and become adults. And helicopter parenting, harassing athletic directors, other officials, is not acceptable and needs to stop. You know, you look at our athletic programs, our cheerleaders won a state title, that's amazing. Everybody is doing very well, but sportsmanship starts with our parents. Our kids learn it from us. When my kid goes to practice, he's supposed to do what the coach says, and that should be supported. I want to make sure that continues to happen. When there's a disruptive parent, whether it's at a sporting event or at a practice, a parent is disruptive, they need to be removed. And that's all there is to it. They shouldn't be using a school administrator's account, email account, to continually send hateful messages, and it's wrong. It's wrong. Our coaches need our support as much as our children do.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
So, my name's Jovan Pesic, and this is Mason Grindel. We're both here on behalf of the wrestling team. We've, this past weekend, we went to regionals, and the entire wrestling team came in fifth overall. We had eight people placed top six in their weight class, five of which are all going to states. And we credit this to our coaches, who have worked tirelessly to build this program at EHS and build us as athletes. To demonstrate the growth we've had, we have doubled the number of athletes going into states this year.
I wish this was the only reason to come to speak tonight, however, it's not. Over the course of this year, we've endured what feels like constant attacks on our coach and team from adults who are not part of the athletic staff at EHS. The constant attack on our coach has resulted in a public argument, which had a me, addressed, added stress to us athletes, and now the resigning of one of our coaches, who we love. We're here because something should be done about this, but we recognize we need to know in order, or to do something. We figured we would tell you some of the reasons this team and this coach are some of the best EHS has to offer.
Our team is more than a team. We are a family, and our coaches are basically like parents to us. They treat us just like kids. And I've seen our head coach bring an athlete to the ER and stay there all night with him just to go the next day to a wrestling meet all day long. And he's traveled with us everywhere we could imagine, and he has to take that time away from his family. And he also poured his entire heart and skill into this, whether we're a wrestler or we're just a kid that's willing to learn. Our coaches care about us personally and show, show us that by celebrating our victories, holding us accountable to being the best we can be, and believing in us. Great teams are led by great coaches. This is a group of great kids just trying to represent our school by doing something we love. A group of guys who wants to see us work hard and success, and be successful. It is a shame that we have lost this, lost that due to adults behaving poorly and not, should not be our legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Margaret Carter, and I've been a substitute teacher in the Ellsworth School Department for 19-plus years. I'm amazed that I've lasted that long, but I have, and I actually love my work. However, last fall, I discovered that a law had been passed by our state congress in 2020 and enacted in January 1st of 2021. In your policy, it says that substitute teachers should have been receiving earned paid leave hours at a rate of one hour for every 40 hours worked.
Sorry, it's gotten really hot.
Well, I was thinking, I was actually enjoying it. I run cold. I run cold. I go falling asleep. Anyway, we should have been receiving this earned paid leave hours since January 1st of 2021. We didn't start receiving it until I brought it to the attention of the central office in last November. Some of us got backed up to September of last year, but we need the hours to be given back to us that we were not given from, for four years, almost four years. And so I have a letter for you pointing out that in your policy is actually a line item that says, "Non-unionized employees should have been receiving this benefit since January 1st, 2021." It's in your policy. We are non-unionized. We come to work, we get called, we come to work, we go home. And I would like you to very seriously consider meeting with me sometime so that we can work this out. May I give you a letter now?
Yes.
Thank you.
You can hand them all to me, and I'll pass them down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Okay. We will move on then to new business.
Paul, can I just make a quick recommendation?
Yes.
Just, I know we have a lot of students.
Yeah, that's what's next.
Nope, but what I was going to recommend is that you guys hang tight until after the High Five Awards and the other piece, just because it's the best part.
So new business, High Five Awards.
So this month, we had hoped to honor four recipients, but two were not able, well, three are not able to be here, one is here. Two were sick and not able to come, so we may have a larger group in March. This is always our favorite time, and this award tonight is being given to someone who has exemplified not only great coaching in our district, but also has been a high-quality community member who's been acknowledged by the state for her work in contributions to our local school and community. She has gone above and beyond when the school department has needed meals for either visiting teams or our own student athletes who have wanted support, and she may have just won three state cheering championships in a row. So our first, and she has no idea about this. I love you, Mel, but Melanie Fox is our first High Five Award recipient this evening. And we did also want to honor Kat, who wasn't able to be here this evening. But at this time, Mr. Clifford or Mr. Frost, who wants to do the honors, or do you both?
They're both excited.
Mr. Frost is going to do this, because this is sports.
Plus, I'm a real true cheer dad.
You are.
So I'm Josh Ross, the athletic administrator at the high school. This past Saturday is probably one of the busiest, I think, we have all sports seasons, fall, winter, spring long, where we have every team going except for the varsity basketball teams. So my day consisted of Saturday, going to the JV basketball tournament at Sumner to watch my own daughter's play in that, staying for their first game, and then running out of there, stopping at the cross center to check on wrestling and see how we were doing there, over to Hussin Pool for swim, and then to Augusta for cheering, back to Ellsworth for reception. And I really thought about driving up to Orno to check in on our indoor track. Because Aiden Hughes actually was running the two-mile at 10:45 at night, but I thought better of it at about 9:30 leaving the high school to not drive to Orno and then drive home, so I followed along on the livestream they had there. But congratulations to our swim team, boys' swim team. They were PVC champions again this year, back-to-back. And we had Coach Goodman named PVC Coach of the Year, along with Ann Catherine Burns, who's one of our homeschool students that swims with our girls program, was named Performer of the Meet at the swim meet. So congratulations to them. Also, our wrestlers, phenomenal day at the cross center. If anybody got to see any pictures or video, it was a phenomenal atmosphere, six wrestling mats going, lots of wrestling action all day long, just, it was really a good spotlight for our, our wrestling team. And I'm sure our, our parents appreciate the space that was there, too, to, it's a long day.
The seats are so much more comfortable.
The seats are more comfortable, they're padded. You know, you did have to pay the cross center prices for food, probably, but there's that, but... And then also another side note, as my oldest daughter was home from college just for the weekend and traveling around the state with me on Saturday, we were coming from Sumner back through Ellsworth on our way up the Bango Road, and over the high school, there was an eagle flying. And so those of you who know Elizabeth, Mel's daughter freaks out, "Oh, my gosh, Dad, there's an eagle! Like, I see, is that really an eagle?" "Yeah, that's an eagle, Elizabeth." "That's good luck." I don't know if that's true or not, Melanie, but when you see an eagle on the day of, you know, championship events and things like that, flying over Ellsworth, it's obviously, it is really good luck. So I'm here tonight to congratulate and have our cheerleaders come up and introduce themselves, but they won the Big East Championship, which was at Old Town. They came in second at PVC's, which we'll just never mind that. You know, it was a good wake-up call, it was a good, it was a good check for them. And then they went to regionals and, and came in first at the North Championship, I think by 11 or 12 points, over, over Herman, who was runner-up in the North, and then went to states, and performed a phenomenal routine, came in first place by four or five points, which is like a 20-point win in basketball, so six, sorry, six points, which is like a 25-point win in basketball.
How to grow a mouth.
And their score at regionals was an 87.7, 88.7. Good thing I wrote this down, which, which was what we believe to be the highest score ever by a cheerleading team at Ellsworth High School. Their score went down to an 88.3 at states. I got that one right. So I don't know what happened to states, but they went down four tenths of a point. So, but again, phenomenal season for our cheerleaders, back-to-back-to-back, you know, state champions, and quite an honor, when you see those banners all being hung in the gym, especially over the number of years, 10 years that I've been AD at Ellsworth High School, we've had some phenomenal cheerleading teams, so to finally see them breaking through is, is really kind of a neat thing to do. So without further ado, if our cheerleaders would come up, introduce yourself, just grade level, and then kind of stand up front so we can get a picture, and then you'll be free to go after that.
And they're dressed so lovely.
Right here. Into the microphone.
Molly Smith in grade 11.
Olivia Layton, grade 12.
Whitney Jordan, Jr.
Kaylee Clement, a junior.
Callie Reese, senior.
Callie Cloud, freshman.
Grace Robinson, sophomore.
Brooklyn Burke, freshman.
Kira Crawford, freshman.
Logan Llewelling, freshman.
Lily Alley, junior.
Katie Clark, sophomore.
Do you want me to tell them how old I am?
I'm Melanie Fox, and I get the honor to coach, as you can hear, just a couple seniors out there. So we have a lot of talent still left here, and we're losing two very valuable seniors that we had a little bit of a challenging year. We came out super strong, and we had a senior that had to go off for an injury, and then we also had a freshman off for an injury, so then we were back at square one and working really, really hard. We didn't really feel super confident that we would make it to the top, just facing those few roadblocks early on. We thought it was going to be a lot of work for us, but then probably mid-season, we said, there really is probably going to be a, a pretty tight run here for first place, but not until we get to states. We knew we were pretty solid going through, and that little PVC thing that happened was just a prank. It was just a prank. They were just tricking us. So, and they came back, they rallied back really strong, and they're a good, solid team, and I think you might see them for the next few years, maybe. Thanks.
Smile.
Do some backflips.
This is a very long tee ball.
Congratulations, ladies, and thank you so much.
Congratulations. Now, I told, I told the students out front that they're welcome to stay. Whitney, I know you want to stay, honey.
Maybe see you again in a couple of weeks with some other teams.
That's great. We need an eagle this weekend, Mr. Frost.
Bring out the eagles.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And then everybody leaves, just the master.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My gosh, it feels like it's still getting hotter. Oh, my gosh, blood.
And then there were none.
And now it's hard to know.
Have a good night.
Would everybody like to move forward now?
What do you feel so far?
All right, that was great. Next up under new business is our second item, special presentation on business training initiative.
So I am not going to be able to do a presentation.
Okay.
I thought I was, but this is.
But things happen, don't they?
They do happen.
And this is Annie Sargent, our-
The past two days in particular.
Our Director of Adult Education.
Hi, everybody, as you know, I always love coming here to speak, and we don't do that anymore, so I wanted to share one little piece of our program that I'm really excited about, and I think it's really relevant. Amy Bowles talked about the workforce and the challenges around childcare, and so Ellsworth Adult Ed has partnered with the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce, and I'm helping PJ, the Director, facilitate an education and workforce training committee, and we've been doing a lot of work thinking about what kind of training is needed in the community, and so I wanted to share some of the things that we've been up to. One of them that I don't even have in here is that we have a Strengthen Maine's Workforce Grant that is providing at no cost our CNA program, but we had some funding left over, and so we're able to provide HeartSaver Basic Life Support Training, and actually First Aid and CPR as well for people who need it for work at no cost until the money runs out, so look on our website if you're interested in that. So this has a lot of information in it, but I'm not going to take all the time. One of the flyers that you have is for making the best first impression, invest in your customer service, and you have a flyer, it's actually a draft flyer, to be honest, because I haven't had a chance to send it out to the committee to finalize it, so there's, it doesn't look exactly the way I want it to, but it has some of the key information, and that's a training that will be offered by teams of community leaders, four sessions, it was originally scheduled for March, we decided to push it to April for weather-related reasons, and so it's going to be four consecutive, well, not four Fridays, we're skipping April vacation, so the last session is going to be in May, and it's going to be at Avery Lane, we're excited about that, and so that's an exciting thing that's definitely set and ready to go. Not quite confirmed all the speakers, so I can't announce them yet. The next thing is, that I'm really excited about, is we talked about the challenges of boomers, I'm a boomer, training or onboarding young employees because of different approaches of different generations, so we're working on a training called Empowering the Next Generation: Effective Mentorship on the Job, and so we're, I'm hoping to partner with a young person to work on the training with other folks, giving us input, we're really excited about this initiative. So we're thinking that the pilot session would be either a half a day or a day-long training for people who are supervising young people to get some tips and have active participation of both young employees and older supervisors, so I think that's a, everywhere I go, I hear people talking about that, so we thought it was an important initiative, so we're excited about that. The other thing that I won't spend a lot of time talking about, but Work Ready is a credential that was started by the State of Maine, initiated by adult education, but lots of community partners, the Workforce Investment Boards and businesses and so on, developed it probably 20 years ago, maybe longer, I've been around a long time, and they're re, we're reworking it, I'm on a team of people in the state that is reworking that to make it more relevant right now, and so we're hoping to pilot that in the next few months, we're excited about that, and that's the soft skills, so when I talk to business people and I say, "What technical skills do you need, what kind of, you know, what content do you need?", they're like, "We want people to show up on time, we want people to show up for their interview, you know, we want them to, we want them to call in when they're sick", you know, you know how it is, so, so it's these soft skills, and Work Ready only works if you have really strong partnership and buy-in from area employers, so that's why, one of the reasons I wanted to bring it here, to just put the word out that if other, if employers want to support this initiative, it would be really fabulous. And then the other thing that I'm doing, Amy and I had a conversation a little bit about this, setting priorities and not trying to do everything, because I tend to, if I see a need, I want to make it happen, and-
I'm so good at myself.
So what I'm, what I've done, if you go on our website, you'll see, CDL is an example of that, another example is Serve Safe, which is also in here, and what I'm doing is I'm putting it on our website and saying, "Are you interested in this?", so I have enough people interested in the CDL that I have contacted, one of my partners in crime is Kelly Cochran with EMDC, who's a delight to work with, and also very connected in the community, as I see nods, everybody knows her, and so we're gonna, we were really lucky about this, the reason the CDL came up was Andrew Trowbridge, the diesel instructor, right, told me that they had a new truck available, and so it might make sense, because there's, you know, there, you even get calls about CDL training, right? So anyway, so we're going to try to, Kelly and I talked about maybe trying to get something going this summer, because summertime is a time that the truck isn't being used by HCTC, so, and then Serve Safe, same thing, haven't gotten much response about that, I do know that I'm on the board of Loaves and Fishes, and so a lot of the people who work there need to have Serve Safe training, and I've been, I talked to Greg Berry and different people, and they offer online training, but a lot of people don't really learn that well online, and so I, if there's enough interest, I've talked to state folks, statewide people who do the, some of the training, and they're willing to come here and do a training if I can get enough people interested, so I wanted to spread the word about that. Well, the only other thing is that we have done in the past, training specifically designed for an organization, so if, for a carpenter, a building company, they wanted to train all their people on Excel, so we did a training specifically, you know, we met with the people, the owners, and said, "What do you want people to be able to do in Excel?", and then we can design a training. We did the same thing for an organization, a nonprofit who wanted to learn how to use Google. We've done trainings for, one group home kind of outfit, years ago, I did, we did a training on writing charts that were useful, concise, you know, something, so that's something that we can talk about, it wouldn't necessarily be for free, but it would be at cost, and it's definitely much more affordable than other things. Customer service, there's all kinds of things that can happen that way, so yeah, I think those are the things that I wanted to just let people know, that we're working as much, as hard as we can to support employers and strengthen the workforce. Of course, we have lots of other related courses too, we have, I think, 32 different technology-related courses in our catalog, and lots of other, other workforce training too, but I wanted to focus on the business-related ones. Any questions?
You said that you hope that employers will be willing to support the Work Ready credential program, how can employers support it?
Good question, so one of the sort of easy ways to do it, not easy, but one simple sort of concise way, is to do mock interviews, as an example, if you learn, if you learn more about the curriculum and you really believe in it, you might be willing to guarantee somebody an interview if they successfully went through it. Also, just, I mean, if we really, if we want to make this an Ellsworth, the Ellsworth Way, right, if we want this Work Ready to really grow, we could have an advisory group for it to sort of strengthen it so that it meets the local needs, but, yeah, if anybody's just interested in learning more, they can reach out to me through the Adult Ed program, and they're literally, you know, one of the things that I'm really a fan of is informational interviews, which a lot of people don't even know what that is, but it's learning about the job that you might want to take, because people, we don't really talk about our jobs that much, and so you don't really know what a job is, so, you know, being willing to have one of your baristas talk to somebody about what it's like to be a barista, that kind of thing, there's a, there's a lot of different ways you can support.
Any other questions?
No, but I would like to say that, like, it's always really enjoyable when we get to learn about the programs that are happening in our Adult Ed Department, because when we go to trainings, they talk about these initiatives that adult education programs should be putting into place, and, you know, you're sitting there, you're thinking, ours are already doing that, so it's just really incredible to see how much work and how much more is happening through our adult education that a lot of people don't even realize is happening, so.
Well, thank you for saying that, I appreciate it, it's definitely my passion, that's for sure. Thank you, and I have a great team, small but mighty team.
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. All right, next up, hiring an interim administrator.
So, as you know, our Special Ed Director, Carolyn McHeckard-Murphy, resigned, I believe should, her last official day as Director is early March. In the meantime, we had advertised for a Special Ed Director immediately, but as everyone knows, this time of year is extremely hard, people have contracts that hold them typically for 16 to 90 days, and it's just been, as you know, there's been a lot going on, so decided to go in a little bit of a different direction, and very, very appreciative of both's willingness to step up to the plate. Thrilled tonight, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board that we hire Lisa Backman, our current Assistant Special Education Director, to be our interim Special Ed Director for the remainder of the year. We will be advertising in the next 24 hours or so for our vacancies for the '25-'26 school year. The plan is to put the Special Education Director position on there, and those candidates who apply right now will move forward to that. We would like to move quickly on that so that people have their answers and we can plan accordingly, but Lisa has very graciously stepped up to help us for the remainder of the year, feel very confident that her history, both as a classroom teacher and as an assistant director, make her a great fit for the job, and also want to acknowledge that Carolyn very graciously has agreed to stay on for 20 hours a week for the remainder of the school year. As people may or may not know, half of Lisa's position is kids' piece, and we receive state funding to reimburse us for that work, that is a heavy lift, and Carolyn very graciously has agreed to stay on to pick up that part of the job for the remainder of the year until we can establish a permanent leadership structure, so would like your support tonight in hiring of Lisa.
I am happy to make a motion to approve the hiring of Lisa Backman, Assistant Special Education Director, as interim Special Education Director for the remainder of 2024-25 school year, as recommended by the Personnel Committee.
Any discussion? All in favor?
There you go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like, I'd like to say thank you to both of you for stepping up into these roles, so we very much appreciate it.
Yeah, I second that.
All right, next is first read of policies.
So three different motions this evening, as you know, we continue to work through the daunting task of trying to update our policies, many of which have not been looked at since 2017, 2018, and also update older policies as well as adopt new policies that we don't currently have. So the first three policies tonight are Section G, GAB, which look at job descriptions, we have no recommended changes for those, Policy GDF, Support Staff Employment, and then Policy GCI, Professional Staff Development Opportunities. All three of those were reviewed by the Policy Committee with no change.
I will make a motion to approve the review with no changes to the following policies as presented and recommended by the Policy Committee, including GAB, job descriptions, GDF, Support Staff Employment, and GCI, Professional Staff Development Opportunities.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
The next policy is first read of a brand-new policy, GBGAA, I love these codes, Bloodborne Pathogens, this is something we already have in practice, that we already do, but it helps meet OSHA standards, and as we apply every year, for different benefits through our insurance, this policy is something that we don't currently have, that we would like to put into place.
I'll make a motion to approve the first read of Policy GBGAA, Bloodborne Pathogens, as presented and recommended by the Policy Committee.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And then the last one is a policy we currently have in place, but we would like to recommend an amendment, this is Policy GCOA, Supervision and Evaluation of Professional Staff. So we did this fall adopt an updated teacher evaluation system, and so what this policy does is it updates, there's a paragraph in red that was attached in your board packet that simply identifies that we have an approved teacher evaluation system in accordance with the law, and it updates the cross-reference codes to be current for this amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the first read of amended Policy GCOA, Supervision and Evaluation of Professional Staff, as presented and recommended by the Policy Committee. One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Great. So the next item on the agenda, I'm actually going to recommend you not approve tonight, I'm a little frustrated by this agenda item, and do want to talk about it. So Hancock County Superintendents have been working on the calendar for the 2025-2026 school year for a while. Last month, I showed you a calendar that I and a leadership team was extremely excited about, was in line with the other Hancock County community schools, thought we had support, and then learned that the teachers' union would not sign an MOU to approve the calendar. There is language in the teacher's contract that says that school will not start prior to the last week of August, and in that last contract, as you know, it looked at the professional development days being the week prior to that, and students starting the last week of August. So as a result, I have to go back to the drawing board and meet with Hancock County Superintendents, because we are now not in alignment with the other districts, and it is state law that we are. So I did put another draft calendar in your folder that I will talk through, the problem is, this creates other problems. So the biggest issue that we have- So, the biggest issue that we have is that all feedback we have received after our opening days for the last two years from staff and from leadership team is that two days feels too rushed, too much, to start the school year. Because half a day is always just even setting your room, getting your room ready. Half a day for staff meetings is often not enough. And any district learning or initiatives or teaching that we're doing happens on those days, and it's a lot. So, most districts across the state have implemented a three-day professional development opening. We have lagged behind in that and have not done that, and had looked to do that this year. But by doing that, what happens is it now pushes your student day back. And on this calendar, I have put it in the last week of August. And what it essentially means is your K nine students start on Thursday, and grades ten through twelve, first day of school, would be Friday. So essentially, we'd be looking at two days of school before our long weekend, which some people think is good. I don't love it for transition purposes. For me, what's best for students is starting earlier in the week and getting a full weekend and getting routines established before a long weekend. But when you add a third day of P D, you are now left with only two student days. And for your high school students, it would be one day. So basically, they'd get their schedules, meet their teachers, and start after Labor Day. What it also does by putting a professional development day, adding that third day, means you have to take another professional development day away. At the leadership level and in other districts, they don't have a professional development day after the last day of school. So, I originally had taken that out. And students would be dismissed early, as they always are in the last day of school. We would do our staff retirement and recognition ceremony, and everybody would go home for the summer. Staff would not come in the next day. Some members of the union, it sounded like about fifty percent, said that they absolutely have to have that day in June to close their classrooms and finish with grades. I would argue that there are many things that do not happen on that last day. Teachers have oftentimes picked up their rooms, and grades are often already submitted. So, there's mixed review about that. We do not need an M O U for that professional development day, okay? So, right now, in this draft, that day is gone, and staff and students would end on the same day. We could do a couple of other things that leadership team will talk about tomorrow. We could adopt this calendar as is, and that may be the recommendation. We could go back to the typical two days in August, push the student start back so kids would have either two- or three-day starts, and add the day back in June. That would be the traditional calendar setup.
How would that make us look in alignment with the other schools, though?
We'd be off a little bit, but we're allowed five dissimilar days, so we'd have to count those and see. We could do what other districts have done, which is make the November days and Thanksgiving student days. So that Monday, Tuesday of Thanksgiving, those would become student days, and we would add back the June day. And then we're off again. We're off by a day for staff. So we could do two days in August and make the two days in November student days. We could. We used to have one hundred and seventy-seven student days. If you recall, we changed that a year ago because we felt very strongly that staff needed additional professional development time because they needed more time for professional development and work on curriculum. We could go back to having the additional student day or two, and that would change this as well.
What is in their contract, Amy, for how many days?
So, it's the total number of days. It is not in their contract, how many P D versus how many student. It's the total number, which is the one eighty-three. So, what we are held to by contract is that we will not start prior to the last week of August. And so now, if you recall, the first calendar put new staff orientation on the eighteenth and nineteenth with P D on the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second. We gave everyone a long weekend and didn't start on Monday, the twenty-fifth, but started with students on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, K through nine, grades K through ten, the twenty-seventh, and then they'd get a full week of school in. It also pushes back your end date. So now, by not starting that way, and this is like the only year this would happen, but the way the calendar falls this year with Christmas is why this is a conundrum. So, our last student day with the first calendar I recommended was the week of the eighth. And now by starting a week later, we have pushed the last day of school back to Tuesday, June sixteenth.
Well, I don't think that can be avoided. I mean, if we have to push it back, we have to push it back.
And that's with four built-in weather days?
That's with four built-in snow days, correct.
I think if we have to start the last week of August, then this is the best.
So, Amy, essentially what we would do right now is we would, since it's on the agenda, someone would make a motion, someone would second, and then we would vote to reject it, correct? Or would we vote to do this one instead, like what?
No. So, approval of the calendar is on here. You could just simply not make a motion. And it would just go on the March agenda.
Okay, so you just don't have to vote on it?
You just don't have to make a motion. If no one makes a motion on it, then you don't have to vote on it. We've just simply discussed it.
So what happens if a motion isn't, if no one makes a motion? So, who, like, what's going to happen from here?
So, from here, leadership tomorrow is going to review this new draft and talk about it. And really, all that's left to discuss is the last remaining P D days. So, right now, are we going to have three at the start of school? Or are we going to go back to having two in August and one in June? It will not change the structure of this calendar. We cannot.
Right, because we can't be off by more than four to five days.
Correct.
All right. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve and adopt this calendar as presented.
So there is a motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second because I feel like, like, you know, I mean, it's not like you couldn't come back to us and say, "We had a conversation, and we've decided that one of these P D days should really go at the end of the year," right?
No, once it's approved, it's approved.
Once it's approved, we couldn't.
What would you like to see happen?
I'm in support of this calendar. I'm fine with this. This is within the law. I will say there may be some pushback that there's not a P D day at the end of the year. However, to me, based on feedback over the last two years, three days to start the school year is super essential to set our staff and our students up for success to start the year.
Well, it clearly makes more sense.
It does.
Have it at the beginning. I mean, sorry, this sounds a little flip, but you can finish your room and do what you need to do, like, sort of in your own time if you haven't already maybe settled to do some of that, like. But yet, to prepare, be on track with your team, your school, your, meet the new people, you know, everybody getting organized, completely makes more sense to do it in the beginning rather than whatever's happening at the end.
People are fried at the end of the school year.
Doesn't seem like the best time to do professional development.
And to me, having a half-day release with kids, celebrate our staff, and then let them be done. And other districts do it this way. It's not like this is new.
So, if we were to second, like, I already seconded, so look in on second. But if we were to approve this, you would be comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay. Before I vote, I want to make sure that you would be comfortable.
I just wanted the board to have all the stuff.
All the information, right?
I wanted you to have all the options and the information. And to know that if people contact you, that this is the evolution of this because it was presented differently last meeting.
And I guess I'd like to clarify, too, having, it's probably a little late now, I've been here a couple of years, but the hours of a teacher's day and how we got to those hours, from where? You know, is that like a state thing? Is that an us thing? Like, how did we get to those? And like, what's expected to be done during those hours? And what could be asked of you at other times? Like, if your grades are not in, "Oh, I'm sorry, you have to do those over the weekend." "Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm not because that's not in my contract," or whatnot. Then, have you done them when you were supposed to do them? Have you been doing all the X, Ys, and Zs that I'm expecting you to do? Like, during your time? So how did we, how did we collectively, teachers? Yeah, how did we get to where we are? And is it the same?
So, that's part, the teacher workday, in terms of their hours, is negotiated through the contract. So, the contract clearly spells out that it's the student day plus forty-five minutes. And so, at the different schools, depending on what time students arrive, the start and end of that teacher workday may vary, depending on when students arrive because of us sharing buses. That complicates it a little. But those are things that are identified in the contract. And then, in terms of the work, professional responsibilities is the language that is used. But how that is delineated throughout the contract and through the workday is, it is different.
Okay. So then just asking, like, throwing this out there, like, if it's not happening, like, if they're feeling like they're behind, like, "I haven't had enough time to put grades in," or "I haven't had enough time to meet with Whozy and Dozy." Like, how do I, how am I supposed to fit that in? But yet, has their time been used wisely? And how did forty-five minutes come to a number in a contract? Like, I often work very much past forty-five minutes. Like, that, to me, doesn't really make sense. I'm not trying to, like, I'm not starting anything here, like, this is, I'm just literally asking.
You're trying to understand.
I'm not asking you to be there until ten o'clock at night, either. That's not what I'm saying. But I don't understand the, like, "Oh, we start at seven-thirty." But I am only staying until, I don't know, what's forty-five minutes? Three oh five? You know what I mean? Like, to make it like forty-five minutes from two-twenty-two, like, or whatever? Like, how, that just seems off in my head. Like, why is it not a full hour? Why is it not an hour and a half? Like, why is it, like, something more specific? Where also, useful time that can be done, by the time your children walk out the door and you walk back to your classroom, "Well, I just killed twenty minutes because I just passed four people on the way." "That doesn't give me enough time to get my stuff done, but that's not necessarily your fault. That was on me." But now I'm saying, like, "Oh, I don't have enough time." How does all that work? Like, and that sounds like I'm being, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just really asking how we get to these timeframes on what I need this extra now.
And so, yeah, negotiations is really where some of that happens. And some of it has been historically, I don't know that, I mean, I only know the contract I negotiated last year, but, or a couple of years ago now. But prior to that, that is typical, that seven-thirty to three is typical. It used to be, I mean, back when I was first hired in Ellsworth, things like staff meetings happened twice a month, and you stayed until they were done. Things like I E P meetings were considered professional responsibilities, and you stayed until they were done. And over time, I would say, at the national and the state level, how those things are interpreted has drastically changed. And now there's more of an analysis of pay for public servants like teachers and what they're expected to do. And a lot of that gets talked about in negotiations, but then doesn't always go into the contract because some of it is what's considered educational policy. And so, it's, that's a quick, but it's really super complicated how that all works. I don't know if Kelly, if you want to add to that.
Well, no, I was just going, I was going to make it short and sweet and just say it's, I guess that was professional responsibility. I mean, you have to get your grades in. I mean, that's part of the job, right?
So if I have to do them on the weekend, or I have to do them in an evening, or what? Then I do because I didn't do it during my forty-five minutes?
I mean, I don't know.
Well, and I feel like probably the majority, that is what they do.
Or if they don't say. I mean, or any salary job. I mean, the job is the job. You get the job done, and.
Do we have a lot of pushback on that? I'm like, "Well, I just didn't have time," and.
No, I would say.
And does union work on that? Are they very, like?
I would say.
I'm literally just asking, like, questions.
Yeah, I would say that the majority of your salaried staff do the job and do what is expected of them, no matter the cost or no matter what it means they have to do to get the job done. Administrators do it all the time also. I would say that the union is in support of M E A initiatives. And I would say that things have started to be more scrutinized at the union level regarding what should be accepted and allowed to go and what shouldn't. And so that's something that's kind of being worked on and talked about. I would say that the workday is a sticky wicket in some instances. People feel very strongly that they are done at a certain time, and they are going to leave. But I would say the vast majority do what is expected of them, when it is expected of them, to get the job done. I don't think it's this huge pushback. But I think there is a little of that, for sure. I mean, that is true everywhere right now. Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know how.
Yeah, how it all works.
Yeah, how we got to those and what.
Yeah.
I know, so, sorry. Kind of a person.
No, but it makes sense to ask the question, how many hours of salaried, how many salaried hours are you working? Right, essentially.
So we've had a motion and a second, and this is when I asked if there's any discussion, but we just had a bunch of discussions.
See previous.
Is there any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor? We have a calendar.
Woo-hoo.
Okay.
Next up is discussion and consideration of a standing committee.
Yes.
Okay. So, at our last board workshop, I gave you a bunch of information regarding the use of personal devices in schools, gave you some behavioral, social, emotional data, and showed you and gave you some links to look at. But I also gave you a really important packet regarding what they recommend is the best way to go about doing this kind of work. So, having said that, my recommendation is that you use your policy P D F. That is a policy you have that gives you the power to create a standing committee. A standing committee has a typical one type of task, has a defined work timeline, and has defined membership that is decided upon between myself in collaboration with you. So I think you should create a standing committee to examine the usage of personal devices in school. That committee, in my opinion, is a comprehensive group comprised of board, leadership, your day practitioners, some staff, some parents, and I would recommend a couple of students. And then that committee would study the topic, not just immediately start passing stuff, but study the topic, look at the data, look what's working well in places, what's not working well, and then make recommendations to the full board for implementation of either a change of policy or not. Maybe it's exactly what we have right now. But that committee would do the work, get the feedback from the community, much like strategic planning, and then bring it back to the full board for consideration.
So if we go forward with creating, how does that part, how does that work? How do we actually form the committee if we?
So, the board chair works with the five of you to determine who the two members would be.
So we can only have two board members on the committee?
And then what would happen is the two members would keep the rest of the board apprised of what's going on. And I would work to, if you said, "Amy, we want parent-students," then I would work on building that committee.
Okay.
And then we'd start having meetings and so on and so forth.
Kind of the standard practice after that's.
Yes. Yep.
I'll give Beth a moment to come in.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
No, I was like, what is she about to do?
What the heck is she doing?
I would go ahead, I think.
I'll make.
All right, we can, yeah, we can, we can go ahead.
I'll make a motion to create a standing committee in accordance with policy B D F to examine the usage of personal devices in schools.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second.
To form a standing committee. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next up is recommendation for adoption of E H S science textbooks.
So, as we've discussed, we are in dire need of some curriculum and instructional materials updates for our departments and schools, some of which, you know, we've done the foreign language at the last meeting. Science is certainly in need of an uptick as well. The Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, under Nikki's guidance and in accordance with the curriculum committee's procedures, has a recommendation of six new textbooks to help advance our science department and bring them more up to speed. And that was all done with science input, science department input. So, we'd love for you to recommend as a full school board, these textbooks.
So, there's six textbooks here, and we can, we can have a motion to approve all them. In one motion, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I will recommend a motion to adopt the following E H S science textbooks as recommended by the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. Do I need to go through all of this?
Just say as listed.
As listed.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do think that it is worth mentioning that most of these, several of these are A P books.
Yes.
And it helps to line us up with what is expected in those A P courses. It helps us to stay competitive with other programs to make sure that we're offering those to our students. And some of this, there was, it's not like this money's just going to come out of thin air, like, there's, there's money that's already been set aside for it.
Correct.
Good point.
Yeah.
And the beautiful books.
So, five of the textbooks are A P, Advanced Placement. I'm looking at the publication dates and the most, the one that's furthest out is 2018. Everything else is like 2020, 2022, 2023. There's A P Physics and Honors Physics. There's A P Environmental Science, A P Biology.
And on the, the one that's 2018, that is from the actual printed book, but they do update their
Yes.
yearly, their digital.
Yeah.
Because fewer and fewer books are updating
Right.
print.
So, correct. Yeah. They're still as current.
And there's A P Chemistry. I guess there's one, two, three. Yeah, there's four that are A P. And then there's a biology one and integrated science. So. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you. Next, calendar and announcements. The policy committee will be meeting on Thursday, February 27th at 4:30 P M. at Avery Lane. Curriculum committee, meeting Monday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, 4:30 P M. at Avery Lane. Finance committee, meeting February, Monday, February 24th at 9:00 A M. And that's going to be another three, three and a half hour meeting, right?
You got it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, research.
And finance is also meeting Monday, March 3rd, 10:30 A M. at Avery Lane. Personnel committee, meeting Friday, February 28th, 8:30 A M. Avery Lane. Facilities and Transportation, Monday, March 3rd, 9:30 A M. Avery Lane. Our board workshop for this month will be Tuesday, February 25th, 6:00 P M. right here in City Council chambers. And our next board meeting is Tuesday, March 11th, right here at 6:00 P M. And that brings us to Kay.
Having no further business, I would make a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Your second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
Ready.
Thank you.
7:37.
7:37.